Good evening, everyone. Today is June 6, 2021. This is a meeting of the Kushten Board of Selectment. I'll rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to open the meeting tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to go correct the record. It's June 21st.
It is June 21st. Very good.
So moved to open the meeting.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first thing we have today is minutes that need to be approved by Board of Selectment.
Motion to approve the minutes. As presented. Just the correction on one, Mr. Chairman, for the June 30th, 2020, on the new business. The first paragraph needs some correction. I could work with Ms. Leonard on that correction.
Very good. Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't here for the 25th.
Then I'll second the minutes for the 25th, February 25th, 2020 meeting. And all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. And as Mr. Gaspar mentioned, Tuesday, June 30th, 2020 meeting, and the executive session, November 16th, 2020, with the amendments to the first paragraph on the new business. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. So we have meeting mail. The first letter we have is from a gentleman, Richard Gubush, who has expressed interest to be appointed to the Historical Commission. In his letter, Mr. Gubush mentions that he was on the Kushten zoning Board of Appeals for four and a half years, and three of those years as chairman, is a lifelong resident of Kushten. He feels he could contribute to the Historical Commission. Do I have a motion to accept his appointment?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Next, we have a letter from Charles Leonard, who has expressed interest in appointment to the Board of Appeals as an alternate. Mr. Leonard, as some people may know, is Mr. Sesspool here in town, also has been on the Bylaw Review Committee, and has served on the DPW Board in the past. So I have a motion to accept his appointment.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, while we're on the subject of the Board of Appeals, not getting public, there's one, just want to check the attendance of some of the members to ensure that we have a full, you know, we've got a quorum, and we have people participating. So maybe we can go back and take a look at the attendance, and if there are any gaps, then maybe perhaps we need to address that with those folks and pursue their replacement.
Uh huh. Well, I believe later tonight, we're going to do appointments. Ms. Hebert, you did send out letters to everybody who were going to appoint tonight, and they did come back with us, except for a couple people?
There were a few, but none from Board of Appeals. All the Board of Appeals members responded that they weren't.
The problem, I think, Selectmen, and I agree with Selectmen Mona, that's something I took issue too early on, Mr. Chairman, is if people are appointed to boards and committees and they're not making the meeting, as Mr. Mona has alluded to, I agree, if you can't make your attendance, then perhaps you're not fit for that committee or board, or maybe just reasons outside of their purview that they can't make them. But attendance is an absolute necessity when you are appointed to one, especially the zoning Board of Appeals, where demands are four or five votes. So I think Mr. Mona is spot on with.
That's correct.
Attendance, especially for zoning Board of Appeals. We have had some problems over this past year, and I know the pandemic's been out there, but most of them were Zoom meetings. There's been some back and forth about missing meetings and holding up projects and the things of the like. So I'd like to look at attendance, zoning Board of Appeals at least.
Well, we've had that, and we've also had it on Conservation Commission, which has come up over the last few months. So very good, review and.
Yep, I'll look at that.
Thank you. Okay. Third, from meeting mail, tonight we have a letter of resignation from Finance Committee member Ron Melbourne. In his letter, please use this letter to confirm my resignation from the Kushten Finance Committee effective immediately. Unfortunately, my business commitments, especially during the spring season, do not allow me to participate in the meetings as I feel is necessary. It has been a pleasure to serve and wish to express my gratitude to all of the committee members, and especially to Julie Heber for all of her dedicated work for our town. And gentlemen, do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Finance Committee member Ron Melbourne?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's see what we have here. We're going to go a little bit out of order tonight. And with us tonight, we have a gentleman, Don Jacobs, who is here to talk about the union wage and the classification update. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to be here. I believe you truly has given you copies, excuse me, of the proposed plan for the ASME union. I just wanted to make a couple of opening comments, and then obviously, I'm here to answer any questions and/or concerns you might have about the study. In the report, I always give right at the beginning what I call the goal or the purpose, you know, why did we do the study? Why did the town want to take a look at how positions in the ASME group are being paid, and also obviously employees as well? And as it says in the goal statement, you know, the purpose of the study was to establish a process. And I think that's one of the things that I really want to emphasize for the board. The way we've gone about doing this study, and the process now that has been established in doing this study, was really intended to accomplish a couple of basic things. It was to enable the town to pay positions and, secondly, pay employees. And the two key words that you see in the goal statement are to do it fairly. And the word fairly, in this case, this context means consistent. And frankly, consistent means you can explain to how a position is paid, more money or less money, and/or an employee, whatever aspect of compensation you want to look at. By doing this fairly, in effect, the town is establishing a process enabling you to do it consistently. The other primary purpose and reason for doing the study was to do, was to pay positions and employees equitably. Well, as you can see in the goal statement, the word equitable means competitive. And when we use the word competitive, again, we're talking about both positions and employees. What that really means is both competitively internally within this particular group, because it is a bargaining group, and so by definition, by state law, you've got to look at this as a standalone group. But it also means in comparison, obviously, to the marketplace. So my objective in doing these types of studies is to, based on how you're currently doing it, establish a process that frankly, everyone understands. No one that has a vested interest, in other words, in how positions indoor employees in this group, whether you're a member of the bargaining unit, or Selectmen, or Finance Committee, or anyone, town administrator included, should understand and hopefully agree to the process. You can always agree to disagree about the results relative to how a position indoor employee is being paid, but no one, and I really repeat, no one should disagree with the process. If there is a concern about the process, then frankly, it really should be discussed in whatever issues are addressed and frankly, resolved one way or the other. But the bottom line is that it's absolutely essential in order to manage compensation effectively, that everyone understand how it's being done. That's not the case today. When you look at your current plan, as I did when I looked at it for the first time, what you see is a compensation plan consisting of 10 grade levels and positions classified or assigned to those grade levels. And as you've probably seen from looking at the plan, you have a minimum and a maximum salary range for each of those 10 grade levels. And within those grade levels or salary ranges, excuse me, you have steps. In fact, there are five, well, depending upon what step you're in, there are basically five steps in the plan today. But the fundamental problem, you know, that Julie and I have talked a lot about, is understanding, well, how is a position initially been assigned to one grade level and not another? You know, what was the process? Well, that process now has been outlined for you. And the way we've gone about developing the process, initially to address how to pay positions, has been to develop really basically three steps. Three objectives have been accomplished. One, we've now written what I would describe to you as accurate job descriptions. Accurate means two things. It means accurately describing where an employee spends the majority of his or her time, not necessarily every single thing they do. But it also means describing what are the minimum qualifications. And what we mean by minimum qualifications is the minimum knowledge, ability, and/or skill in accordance with the working conditions that those job duties have carried out to enable you to compare positions to one another, and in doing so, as I've just said, write an accurate job description. The other objective, which the board may or may not be familiar with, and you saw it mentioned in the report, is that in developing this process, again, what we also have in mind is that the town needs to comply with what's referred to as the Pay Equity Law, which is a law that was passed by the Commonwealth about three years ago now, pertaining, actually pertaining to both public and private sector employers, not just the public sector. But what that law basically says is that essentially, you can't just use market data in order to determine whether or not you're paying positions, again, quote unquote, equitably. What you have to do, or what you have to use as criteria to determine whether you're paying positions equitably is what I just referred to as the minimum qualifications or the minimum knowledge, ability, and skill, all of which is now described in the job descriptions that have been written. And that enables the town to be able to, in this case, pay this particular bargaining group and comply with the Pay Equity Law at the same time. Okay? So the three objectives, writing job descriptions, developing a grade or a classification plan, and then lastly, a compensation plan, those are the three things that specifically have been accomplished or have been done in doing this particular study. Okay? And based on the job descriptions, again, they've all been written consistently and describing accurately those minimum qualification or criteria relative to the knowledge, ability, and skill that each position requires. And in doing so, now, we've recommended a classification plan, or you might call it a grade plan, that instead of 10 grade levels, we're recommending three grade levels. And the point I want to make there is basically that your 10 grade levels, at least from my perspective, were more than likely developed based solely on dollars and cents, not based on what the employees, the minimum qualifications that they were required to have to carry out their job duties. So in other words, what basically has happened is that when we wrote those job descriptions, and I can come back and talk about the process to write them, but to write them accurately, enabling us to compare positions to one another, and again, comparing both the minimum knowledge, ability, skill, and responsibility that are required to carry out their respective job duties, we're now recommending a grade level structure that's consistent with those different levels of responsibility that exist within this particular group of positions. And again, we're only talking about this specific group, because again, as I said to begin with, this is a bargaining group, and so by definition, that's really all we can look at. So the three grade levels, there's nothing magic about the three grade levels. Believe me when I tell you, we had no idea what the grade level structure might look like until we had written initial job descriptions and then used a position rating system to compare positions to one another. And I know that's a mouthful, but I've just said. But basically, the simplest way to understand this is to look at it from the perspective of writing a job description. And in this case, writing descriptions for all the positions. And once we did that, we then developed a classification plan or a grade level structure that's consistent with your organizational structure, or the other way to say that, it's consistent with the different levels of responsibility that exist within these positions. There's a chart in the report that's referred to as a characteristic chart that basically describes characteristics or the criteria that we've used to define each of the three grade levels. Again, not based on dollars and cents, but based on the minimum qualifications. So once we developed a grade level plan, a classification plan, then we collected market data, as you might expect. But we also, in order to define the word competitive, used two other criteria. And again, all this is spelled out in the report that you've gotten copies of. So the three criteria we used to define competitive were the market data, the rate of pay of the employee at the present time, and then, thirdly, the number of years that each employee has been in their current position. And by doing so, as you, I think, can begin to understand, we're not just using market data, which, again, the Pay Equity Law says you're not supposed to do anymore. So implying those three criteria, we now have developed a compensation plan. And what I mean by compensation plan is a salary range structure with a minimum and a maximum for each of the three grade levels. And those minimum, maximum numbers are tied directly to the survey average midpoint that we refer to as the benchmark for each of their respective grade levels. In other words, we collected market data, we grouped the market data by how we initially grouped or classified positions. We then went back and took the survey average midpoint for each of the respective grade levels, ruling out basically the highs and the lows of the market data that we collected, because frankly, the market data just isn't all that reliable. It's very, very misleading. So by focusing on the midpoint, we're trying to minimize that aspect of using market data to help us define the word competitive. And again, I know I've quickly run through what the process entails, but suffice it to say, in doing these types of studies, and I've been doing this now for 20 years, and I've probably done almost 200 of these kinds of studies, not just here in Massachusetts, but frankly, up and down the East Coast. One of my biggest concerns when I start a study like this is two real basic concerns. One is the need to establish open lines of communication, which really addresses the need for everyone to understand the process. And then, secondly, to be able to establish a process enabling the town to maintain the compensation plan that's now being recommended to you. So establishing a process, once again, not only to develop this particular plan, three grade levels and respective salary ranges, then again, meet the standard of being competitive, both internally and externally. And along with that, a process to enable the town to maintain the plan, frankly, and to do it within the town. Meaning, you don't really need to bring someone like myself or any other outsider, frankly, in my opinion. This process is designed to be simple enough, frankly, so everyone should understand it. And I can't put it any other way, no matter who you might be. Okay? And if you look at it from another perspective, particularly from the Board of Selectmen's point of view or the Finance Committee's point of view, this process is enabling you to develop a compensation plan, and then, as part of your budget process, frankly, decide how much you can afford to spend. So the affordability, the cost aspect of developing a compensation plan is really separate from this particular study or this plan. In other words, the plan by itself doesn't really cost you any money, per se. Writing job descriptions, developing grade levels, and respective salary ranges, that's the basic plan. And that bind in itself, you know and I know, it doesn't cost money until you spend money to hire someone and/or to retain them. And at that point, we're talking about the employee, obviously, both to hire someone as well as to retain them. Okay? And so that basically is the plan. Again, I think it's important for you, as well as everyone else that has a vested interest in not only this group of positions, but frankly, at some point, all the positions in the town. In other words, the process really should be the same. I heard you mention earlier in your conversation about different processes to pay different people. You can pay people different amounts of money, but the process should be the same. And by doing that, you're making a commitment or essentially making a statement as to the value, as to how you want to treat both positions as well as employees. And the bottom line, as we all understand it, is based on what you can afford. So the affordability aspect of compensation is always there. All we've done is develop a process to bring you to that point where then you're ready to decide, one, how much money you can afford to spend, and then, last but not least, develop the best way possible to spend the money. Okay? And so that's the recommended plan. And I'm happy to maybe stop at that point and obviously answer any questions and/or concerns you might have.
Gentlemen, any questions?
No, less questions, but more just an observation. I just think, you know, whether it's a municipality, whatever organization, if you can create a process and a system that ensures stability, I think that's like the key to success. You know, if there's force, if there's volatility and turnover, I think that's when you lose out on opportunities, and that's when the organization starts to go through some upheaval, which I don't think is good, you know, especially as a municipality. The more stable things are, the better we can, you know, perform for the taxpayers. I think this will hopefully help, at least give us a guideline to achieve some degree of stability within town government. If you look at some of the higher performing departments, you know, three people here today, the fire chief, building inspector, and our DPW, we've had stability in those departments for quite some time, right? And we're able to move things quickly. We see, you know, the departure of Allen, town administrator. You know, change was made, Julie came on board. There's a degree of, you know, onboarding that takes place, and you know, it'll be some time before everybody starts to feel that continuity. So hopefully, this will help us get to that, get to that point or achieve that for overall town government.
Yeah, if I can just make one quick comment, you know, as a follow-up to what you just mentioned. I mean, if there's one characteristic that really describes every single plan, study I've ever done, and as I said, I've probably done almost literally 200 of these kinds of studies over the last 20 years. Number one issue, make no mistake about it, is communication, not the money. In other words, how these decisions are made, which are inherently subjective, someone has to decide how to pay a position just as someone has to decide how to pay an employee. That process, and again, if you look at the final report, what I've recommended in the report is that that process, which I've now spelled out for you, the steps we went through in writing job descriptions, surveying the marketplace, and developing, and really basically doing everything in the study, I've now given to you in writing. And this is my one opportunity really to say to you as board, if you're comfortable with the plan, and you understand the process, and you feel it's in the town's best interest, as well as the employee's best interest. So it's a true win-win in the true sense of the phrase, then what I want to really strongly encourage the board to do is to adopt that process, put it in writing, and include it in your other personnel policies and procedures so that everyone understands how the town of Kushten pays positions and pays employees. Whether they're in a bargaining group and/or not in a bargaining group doesn't make any difference. The only difference or distinction relative to a bargaining group versus a non-bargaining group or a non-union group is the process the town has to follow in order to make a change. That's it. But frankly, a position's a position. Whether it's in the fire department or the police department, makes no difference other than what's unique to that particular position as it relates back to the minimum qualifications that I mentioned earlier. They obviously vary, they differ in that regard, but the process is the same. So again, I want to just reiterate, communication is the number one issue. And the best way that I've ever seen in order to deal with the communication issue is to put the process in writing. Because turnover is a given, it's just a question of when turnover occurs, as the chairman mentioned earlier. It's about, it has to happen at some point in time. Having this compensation process put in writing will help the town deal with the communication aspect, which doesn't really cost you any money. But I can't stress enough to the board how critically important that is. That's the most important thing you can do, in my opinion, is approve the process, and by in doing so, put it in writing. I don't mean to belabor that point, but any more than I already have. But I, again, I can't tell you, when you look at how municipalities manage compensation, that's the key distinction. All you have to do is ask another municipality, have you put the process in writing? Talk to an employee, ask them if they understand how they're being treated. Right now, the answer here is no. They know the numbers, but what they don't understand, because you haven't communicated to them, is how the process works. And it should be a process that, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, is a true win-win. Everybody should understand, and everybody should feel they're benefiting by it. Doesn't mean I don't want to pay more money, so don't misunderstand me. Or it doesn't mean that the town can't afford to spend more money, as the case might be. But at least everyone agrees and understands the process. That's why this, you know, bargaining group puts the process in writing. But interestingly enough, when you look at your contract, there's nothing in this document that tells you how it's done. It's just a bunch of numbers, which means you're leaving it up to someone to be able to interpret it or understand it. And you and I, but we all understand, depending upon who you might be, you're bound to have a different interpretation or a different opinion. And that's not to anyone's best interest to have it like that. So the last thing, oh, I forgot to mention, and I'm sorry, I just remembered. On a positive note, frankly, the upshot of this whole study, as I mentioned, determining whether people are paid competitively, I got to tell you, you know, that almost 200 studies I've ever done, this is one of the first ones that I can think of, where all the employees, in my opinion, based on the process that we followed, are in fact being paid competitively. It's never happened. It just doesn't seem, it just, I can just tell you a fact, it just doesn't happen. And so when I looked at the results, once we gathered the market data and we looked at the rate of pay of the employee and their years of service, and there's a chart in this report that shows you that, it shows you where all the employees are today based on their current rate of pay and years of service within this proposed plan. And basically, they're all within the second and third quadrants. They're all right in the middle of the proposed ranges. And lastly, before I forget again, you'll notice that the ranges are pretty wide, the minimum and the maximum. The reason for that is that you're dealing with an employee, collective bargaining group, that has a multi-year agreement. And so the range structure that's been developed is wide enough from the minimum to the maximum, the differential, so that the town doesn't have to change the ranges every year during the course of the contract. In other words, we let the marketplace catch up to you. The minimum and the maximum numbers don't cost you any money. Again, you don't necessarily pay someone a minimum and/or a maximum. How they grow within the range, the board really needs to determine, right? Within that set of guidelines, I guess you could say. Okay? And that is different, frankly, than the way you've been managing compensation in the past. But again, it gives you the flexibility, frankly, to be able to decide, again, based on what you can afford, the best way to spend the money.
Mr. Gaspar, any comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank Mr. Jacobs for his work and dedication to the town when it comes to the wage and classification. And I'm not saying, you know, about adopting and not adopting. There's a lot of, there's a lot of information here. And to say I got through this through the weekend, with Father's Day being Sunday, would be a lie. So I'm looking forward to getting through that document. There's a lot of paper there. So I look forward to getting through the wage and class and hopefully deriving a sheet of questions and be able to speak with you in the future on it.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of information in there, and I'm sure a lot of it I could get through relatively quickly because I'm familiar with them. But how you got to, some of your information seems very interesting relative to the last wage and classification that we had done. So I really do look forward to looking at your research and how you've derived to certain numbers and positions and, you know, at the end result, I'm looking forward to seeing. Coming from you.
Yeah, it's my pleasure. Any questions the board has, you know, Julie knows how to get in touch with me.
Mr. Jacobs, I concur with Mr. Gaspar's comments. It's going to take a little bit of time to digest this. But I would also like to ask the board to, you know, take the time and look at it and come up with an answer, you know, whether to adopt, or change, or adapt, or how we want to go forward from here. We do have the ASME contract negotiation coming up again next year. And, you know, to have a plan and a direction as we enter those negotiations, I think would be very helpful.
Absolutely.
So thank you very much.
My pleasure.
For the effort.
And again, if you have any questions, obviously, I'm happy to help explain and get you to a point where you feel comfortable understanding what this is intended to do.
Well, certainly.
Thank you very much, President V.
I look forward to getting through this one and having some dialogue with the board, as well as the town administrator, because we do have other unions to negotiate with. And you hear a lot of, well, this is being paid, and that's being paid, and this is being paid. And then I find myself almost doing a job like you have, where you're researching other communities, trying to see what people are doing and understanding what the job duties are in another town. And somebody could say, hey, that person's getting paid 50 grand. I'm only getting paid 40 grand, but that person's job description is clearly outweighing this one. So why am I paying you the same 50 if you're not doing merely the amount of work that that position's doing? And that's where somebody like myself or anyone that is on a Board of Selectment And that's where somebody like myself or anyone that is on a board of selection can really, get really caught up in a lot of unnecessary time researching things, and that's pretty much what your job was here. And that's why I appreciate your time and your professionalism doing something like this. It saves me, I hope, that I don't see a lot of discrepancies from what I've already learned in the process of doing this stuff versus what you've done, and I, I don't think that would be the case based on everything you presented to the board.
No, and I think if you, if you look at the current plan, so let me just use one example, you know, without getting into a lot of detail, but basically, right now you're paying library positions in this group at three different pay levels. And the end result is that there aren't three levels of responsibility when you look at what the individuals are actually doing, and it isn't the amount of work they do, it's that, again, as I said earlier, it's the minimum skill effort and responsibility, or what they need to know in order to carry out their job duties. And when you compare them to one another, there aren't three levels of responsibility even within the library. Your dispatcher positions that are in this study, very similar type of situation, when you look at how currently your dispatcher positions are being paid in relationship to the other positions within the group, again, that's the way we went about then determining, that there really, when it was all said and done, very simply three levels of responsibility, not 10. So instead of 10 pay levels, we're saying there really should only be three, but the number of pay levels is not determined by dollars and cents, it's determined by, again, writing the job descriptions consistently and then comparing them to one another to basically describe, again, the skill effort and responsibility that is required of the employee in a particular position. Then we looked at the dollars and cents, but not until we first had developed a grade plan, and we said that, you know, it was sent back to department heads, you know, that were part of this particular group or this study, to get their input into the process as well, relative to how they're managing their respective departments. So I had, you know, lengthy conversation with your police chief, for example, about the dispatch positions and how those positions are currently being managed by the police chief, and the same kind of conversation with your library director. How are you managing these positions today as they compare to one another? And how does the job descriptions I provided to you compare to that, that process that you're using right now in managing the library? So suffice it to say that your department heads particularly, as it relates to these particular positions, have had a good deal of input with regard to how they're managing the positions, and so that then, when it's all said and done, they'll know that their management process and how they're organized within their respective departments is consistent with how the positions are being paid. And right now, that's not the case. And as I said to Julie several times, the most significant change here is not the money. As you can, they can already see, when you say, you know, you're going from 10 grade levels to three grade levels, that's a significant change, right? Something's different.
Depends on where that range is in the three and the 10, right?
Well, yeah, how'd you get from 10 to three? Why is it at four? Why is it at two? The answer to that question is very simply, just look at the characteristic chart that describes what we mean by each of the grade levels. If I were to ask you today, well, what do you mean by grade level two versus five or 10 or eight, other than the dollars and cents, I think you'd have a hard time explaining it, let alone understanding it, okay? That should never happen again. And, and again, if you're comfortable with this process that we followed in developing this particular plan, the same process would apply to all the other positions, okay? Not a different prior, it would be exactly the same. The results would be different, depending upon the positions obviously. And, and believe it, when you're an employee, that's a nice thing they want, employees typically want to hear, that you understand what it takes for me to do what I am required to do, you understand the pressure that I work with, the skill that I need to have to do what I do. That's the message that I'm really trying to encourage the board to send to your employees. It's not about the money, it's about understanding what we require you to do and what skill and/or ability you need to have to do it, and we're gonna pay you as a result of that, okay? That's the link, that's the tie-in. The money, obviously, to a large extent is affected by what you can afford to spend, and, and most people understand that, whether they like it or not is a whole nother story. But as I said earlier, you know, the question I really try to encourage people to ask is, well, what's the best way to spend that money? And that question oftentimes really doesn't get discussed or asked as much as I think it should, because money is limited, you know, your revenues are what they are, and you don't have unlimited amounts of money to generate, to pay for anything really, other than what you feel are the most important aspects of managing the town. This just is one of them, so.
Very good.
Again, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, sorry to run on.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Look forward to talking to you again.
Mr. Jacobs, yes, cell phone number on this, on this presentation is accurate.
Julie doesn't know how to get me, her associate does. Yeah, it's there. Or if they don't get me, I'll get them, as I will. So feel free to call anytime.
Okay. Have a good night. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our appointments, we have Mr. Merritt, Europe. How are you today?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. How are you?
I'm doing very well, thank you. You have a few things you want to talk to us about? One is the telephone poles, or the installation of solar farms, and telephone poles compared to underground utilities, in a way.
What I'm trying to do, Mr. Chairman, is to encourage solar developers right now to look more in line with what Kirsage did on Middle Road, which is to bring their power from their units underground out to the street. Eversource seems to be making an effort that we want everything up above ground. I tried to explain to the planning board that's not necessarily the case, the case is they want to get the power out to the street, it doesn't have to go overhead. And you can see from some of the documents that I provided you, like the new project that they're proposing out on Robinson Road, there's 12 telephone poles that stick there. So it doesn't really matter how much we try to protect the visual aspect of the community by putting up burns or making plantings or creating fencing, you can't disguise 12 telephone poles sticking out above the field. People drive in from, from Rochester, it's gonna be one of the first things that they see. On Main Street, there's another one right between two homes where there's six telephone poles, right along, one right inside the other. There's just no reason why those poles can't go underground. So my actual thought is, and maybe I haven't proposed enough of a fee, but my thought is, is to charge these people $5,000 per pole, which may encourage them to then take the power and put it underground, put it into a concrete vault where they have the control panels in these green boxes that, you know, are, everything's red, like the one for Kirsage, the entire field is documented right on the face of, of the control panel, so they know exactly how many, how many panels are there, how many, or when I say panels, I mean how many solar panels are in the field, where they're located, how they're located, how they're switched, and, and I think that's really what we want to do. I mean, we're being inundated with these things, and I don't think it's a bad thing, I'd rather have these than residential developments. I, I mean, think that has a tremendous impact on the community in a negative way. I think the solar fields actually provide a good income source for a long period of time, but I think we want to encourage them to do it the way we want them to do it, otherwise. You know, there's even been talk now about maybe putting a moratorium on them. I don't necessarily think we have to go that route, but I think this is an alternative which we can encourage them to develop the panel or develop the fields the way we want to see them develop.
Is this $5,000 fee comparable to underground utilities? I mean, is it something that...
That I don't know.
It's high enough, I mean, they might just still say, hey, it's still less expensive to put the poles in and, and go that direction, or, you know, is there any...
I mean, my, my actual hope is, is there cost for putting the poles in? If you look at the poles, like if we look at Robinson Road, there's 12 poles, that's $60,000, plus the cost that they're paying to put the poles in. My honest feeling is, is that they can do this underground much more cheaply than that and eliminate that fee. But do I have, you know, particular data to back that up? No, I don't.
Do other, do other towns, have other towns, have you researched other towns and how they're addressing this? Because we're not the only ones that are seeing this, and I agree with you, Mr. Merritt, that we are seeing, I, I would say, an overabundance of solar development in our community, and it's affecting wildlife and pushing it into residential areas, and I've gotten a lot of complaints about that wildlife issue. And, and maybe a moratorium is something that we may need to look at to slow this down and give us a little break from that kind of development and allow wildlife. When you have multiple projects going and you're wiping out 20, 30, 50 acres of property in multiple areas of the town, that's not good for wildlife, that becomes a problem.
Approximately, how many, or exactly, how many do we have on the books right now? I know we have three operating?
We have three operating, we have 12 that have been approved by the planning board ready, ready for, you know, installation. Now, there's two sides to this. Some of the property or some of the proponents for solar have actually put the proposals back before the town, looking for their approval, and then they go to Eversource, looking for their interconnectivity agreement. There are others who go to Eversource, getting their interconnectivity agreement, like Kirsage did, so that once the board approved, they went right ahead and began to do the installation.
That's correct, because that can be a period of time, right? I mean, the driving range over here on Main Street, that's been approved by the town for a period of time.
That's been approved, and, and the applicants or the contractors have actually, you know, said, listen, we're ready to get going, but even with that, that was probably two months ago that they, they called me up and said, you know, this is what we're ready to do. The most recent one, I think, is 550 Main Street that they'll, they'll start with, but the same contractor or same proponent is doing both projects.
Right, but the Eversource connection is, can take some time. We can prove it, and then it can take...
They originally put their petition before the planning board two years ago.
Two years ago, okay.
Jim, do you, do you know, are you working with the planning board as far as being the zoning enforcement officer, make sure that they're, they're complying with the bylaws when they're approving these projects? Because I know inside the bylaws for anything above, I forget the exact size, maybe it's a one-megawatt facility, solar field, there's, there's, there's a bylaw that states, like the site plan approved, that they have to go through for tree cutting, anything more than a six-inch trunk, things of the like. Are they, are they going through that process and making sure they're complying with the bylaws when it comes to these massive? Some of these that I've seen, they're quite large facilities, and a lot of them need tree clearing, and we have a bylaw that says, you know, that needs to be reviewed, you know, are we really doing that?
There are, yes, there are three of them on the books right now where there is considerable amount of clearing. One of the things that we took a look at was having Mr. Hannan be involved with looking for stormwater and looking at the criteria that the bylaws have established, so he's been on top of that. And he's in contact with me to let me know that that's what they're looking at and what the fees they're charging actually for those, those impacts. You know, it's, by law of the state, we can't actually deny a solar from coming in, but we can regulate them to a point where they're gonna provide the protections that we want to see.
Sure.
Two of the larger ones that we have right now, of course, they're so remote, they won't be seen by anybody, similar to the very first one we put in the community. And, you know, that's, that's kind of what we would hope to have.
Right.
And of course, the end result is, is that by them developing these parcels of land in, in solar, they're also, you know, one of them particularly actually overlays a project, when I first came into town, it was like 330 houses, you know, that, that could have been really catastrophic to the community. So the impact of solar really is, is nonexistent relative to, you know, how much tree clearing they go on. But, yeah, I, I think we're looking as, as consistently and as pessimistically as we can at how the impacts that these fields have on our community. And, you know, you can't deny that they, they have some impact on the biodiversity of the community, but, you know, there are other developments, particularly residential developments, which could have a similar or more impactful...
Sure, sure, yeah, I'm not, well, listen, we, we, we were all for it, Green Energy Community back in 2012 or 13, whatever it is, right? I'm all for green energy, but, you know, when it starts consuming all your land in a, in a municipality, I think Rochester's facing the same kind of, I call it, kind of a crisis, and that's really what it's become.
Yeah, we are basically agricultural.
And, and not all land is developable to residential property as it would be for a solar farm, so.
Right.
You know, you got, there's, there's pros and cons on everything, but you, when we say this, it could be potentially 50 acres developed to residential, that's not necessarily always a true statement, because it's not always perkable, right, and buildable, first of all. And wetlands has a lot to do with it and things of the like, so I mean, you know, you might look at 50 acres and say, oh, that's 25, 30 house lots, but it's really not, once you're all done with the wetlands and, and things of the like, and perks and tests and Title Fives and all that stuff you did.
But the same restrictions apply to solar as well. You know, I mean, you can't build solar fields in wetland, so I mean, they do have that system.
Yeah, as far as that goes, we don't have to protest for a solar field, right?
This is right.
Okay.
Mr. Warner? Just, Jim, I think it's a great idea with the fees, but I guess, question is, can we just require underground? I mean, do you have to go, I mean, what would prevent us from saying...
I think we can. I think from this point forward, we can. The issue, I guess I have, is that the planning board has approved all of the projects that have come before them now. The only recourse, my, my regular thinking is the only recourse we have to force them to put it underground, and it may not work that way, but I think the fee established may force them to look at putting the poles up in sequence the way they have and say, you know what, we're not gonna pay that kind of money, so we'll go underground. That's, that's my only thought.
So this is, you're saying that this policy would be, not applied retroactively, but...
Well, none of the projects have come to me for permitting yet, so if the board approves the fee structure, then I have the right to apply it as the permit comes in. Those projects that have come in to me for permitting, I can apply.
So what would we have to do then to require people to go underground?
I think it would simply be talking to the planner when he comes on board and having them encourage the board to take...
So the planning board would have to adopt that policy, is that what you're saying?
I think they have the right to. I think that right now, they can through, through site plan review and the special permit that they issue, they can say, listen, we don't want things underground, I mean, we don't, we don't want the poles overheads.
But that still doesn't etch it in stone, we've learned that, right?
Right.
So, I mean, it, I won't even go there, I, I kind of like the high permit fee structure and put it in place, and then you kind of, it kind of dictates to them, if, listen, if you're gonna come in and wipe out 50 or 75 acres of friggin' tree forestry and to gain revenues for your company, the least you could do is put the poles, put the wiring underground, as Mr. Merritt's alluding to, and not make it look like a high tension lines from Eversource running through people's property, right?
I'm not disagreeing with that, I think this is a great, this is a great idea, I'm just saying on the front end, before you get to the point where you have to have a conversation about putting poles up, that on the front end, make that the policy, so...
I agree, I agree.
However we can make that happen, is what we should do, so it's...
Yeah, I think that's the direction we will go in.
Right. I also see, Mr. Merritt, you have $5,000 per battery storage.
Well, one of the things we're finding now is battery storage is a big part of all the solar projects that are coming in, because it allows a lot of flexibility for the solar developers, because what they're generating, if it doesn't go into the grid and isn't used, it's dumped. Now they can use the, the solar generation that they're getting by charging the batteries and feed back to the system, the need as, as it comes about. The units that, that come in are highly valued, they're like million, a million dollars per unit. Some of them are four to six units coming in. So with that kind of value, and there is, you know, certain criteria and certain inspections that need to be followed through the fire department as, as well as my electrical inspector, that I, I think it's warranted. I think if they, they have this kind of money and put this kind of effort and value into the property, I think we have the ability to, to put the fees there.
And that's $5,000 per megawatt, so if we...
Yes.
What are we getting now, again, like five megawatt farms coming in? Is that one of the big ones?
Well, what I have found is normally each container is usually a megawatt, so whether they come in, is, is two containers or four containers or six containers, you know, we would...
Right, it seems like it's based on the megawatts of the farm and not the actual unit. Like, if you've got six units, it's not 5,000 per unit.
Correct, right now, you're right.
Right now, right, so it'd be based on...
Well, it is, if it's, if it's one megawatt per battery storage unit.
Oh, yeah, right.
And picture a small camper sitting on a lot, because that's how big some of these things are, they can actually be quite larger than that. And Mr. Merritt's going with the one megawatt, actually, it should be scaled in the permitting fees, and if it's one megawatt and they drop something half the size of this room, but as long as this room on the ground, it's 5,000 bucks. You drop another one side by side to piggyback that, because they need two megawatts of storage, it's 10,000 bucks, right, Mr. Merritt? That's the way you're envisioning this? It's per megawatt unit.
Right.
So if they bring in one unit that's the size of this building and it's 20 megawatts, I'm not saying it's gonna happen, you, Mr. Merritt, see, that's 100,000 bucks, because it's 20 megawatts.
Right, right.
So, is, with, with the planning board, is, is the planning board, I don't know if you guys are that far yet, but is the planning board considering incorporating the battery storage units as well in the decommissioning policy, as part of that decommissioning policy? Because I know we're a little behind the curve with decommissioning policies, and I'll be talking to the town administrator and the board about that, upgrading our decommissioning policy as far as fees?
Yeah, how the board, well, the way the board used to look at decommissioning fees, it actually go to their independent consultant and have during their review, determine what the value would be to decommission the site. So if the site has battery storage, I know all of that is going to, to their, you know, under their, or being under their...
So they look at the plans that the planning board looks at, you look at?
Correct.
An engineer, that would say.[1774.82]
No, I mean, and then the other issue, of course, is that the developers are also issuing, this is what we feel is what the decommissioning costs are.
Of course.
Which ended up being ridiculously low.
Of course. I've just been doing a lot of reading on it and I wasn't, I didn't realize how much I missed and how much we may be missing when it comes to the cost of decommissioning. So it's something that I'm reviewing now and reviewing how we do it and seeing if we actually have an adequate policy in place for decommissioning, so.
Is my assumption right that it's like eighty thousand dollars right now for a decommissioning?
Right around that averages, yeah.
Again, it depends on the size of the system, I guess. We have anywhere between fifty-five and a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of decommissioning costs on the units that we have.
Depending on the size of the farm.
Okay, very good. Mr. Warner.
You talked about a moratorium. I heard that reference tonight and I'm.
That has come up in conversation.
Is that allowed? Would we be allowed to?
I think it would have to go to a town meeting vote and I believe that the legislature would, you know, maybe take a negative look upon that.
I see. Okay, because it's essentially, it's by right, right, solar funds? Okay, so if we think a moratorium is not doable and is not achievable, would it cap? You know, if you were to say no more than two per calendar year, something like that. But if you're saying that that's not, you know, doable, then?
I think the way to approach it would be to encourage the planning board to understand the rights that they have in site plan review and a special permit approval. And I think we have the ability to regulate the heck out of them to make sure that they're producing what we want to see in the community, not what they want to see in the community.
Yeah, the stormwater is one of the major ones that we've missed for a long time. As far as stormwater permits go, right? We have a stormwater bylaw, we have since two thousand and seven, and we have an issue with stormwater permit. So shame on those that are responsible for that, but the past is the past and we'll figure this out. We're going to move forward into the future with this. But I think that's one of the biggest issues is stormwater fees as well.
Do we need a motion to approve?
Yes, oh, yeah.
So.
Right. I make a motion to approve the permit.
Second.
Fees as presented by Mr. Merritt.
Yep, at five thousand dollars per pole and five thousand dollars per megawatt of battery storage. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Merritt.
Before you move on, I'm just going to go out of order here so I can let you go. You do have on the new business, you have a CARES request for transfer of money for a printer scanner on the agenda here.
It's, yeah, it's part of it. It's something that we've had discussion about, mostly for the use of those of us that need large plans. Right now, because of the software package that we have, we're actually getting, you know, plans that I can actually visit on my computer screen, on my monitor screen, which sometimes are almost not readable. You have the ability to enlarge it on the screen, but then you're kind of scanning back and forth and back and forth to get it out.
Correct.
It would be handy to have something that can come in where we can actually, I mean, I can demand each contractor to give me at least one set in that size. But in instances where we have a lot of people who come in who even want, say, you know, I'd like these reproduced or whatever, we can do that. But the planner scanner would allow us also to take some of the plans that we have, to scan them in and take them and file them electronically. Because the new system or the filing system that I have is a great filing system. When we moved up the parting ways, we added a new carriage. And in the few short years that I've been here, because we've been so inundated with different plans that, you know, that new carriage is almost full and we're packing files in there. So having the program, the software program they were using and having the ability, you know, all the plans done electronically and having to file them electronically will save that. But in instances where we do need to have paper plans, they can come in and we can file them, we can print them and we can reverse existing plans electronically.
Right, so I could send you an electronic file of a plan and you could print it out or vice versa.
Vice versa, correct.
And that's what the machine would let you do.
You would charge, you would charge, if somebody asked for a larger scale?
We do now.
We charge for copies, right? So you would charge obviously an appropriate fee for the larger copy and the ink associated with things of.
Correct.
Yeah?
And this money can be brought out from the CARES Act money?
It can, yep. So this is in conjunction with the online permitting software, essentially encouraging social distancing, doing stuff online. So, yeah, it can be covered by CARES. And we said up to ten thousand. We're trying to get a few quotes. The first one we had was around eighty-five hundred, so I think.
For the printer, for the printer scanner for Mr. Merritt?
Printer scanner, yeah.
Yeah, well, money well spent, I think.
Yep.
Well, it would also be something that all of our departments would share. You know, DPW, Board of Health, CONCON, Planning, they all have the ability to use it.
Kind of hard to look at an eight by eleven sheet of paper. I've seen, I've seen some of them before from, you know, but, and you can't depict anything off the plan, right? So, and it is nice to have them. For planning and things, Jim, we, ZBA, I think they have the right to ask for so many copies from the developer, right? But as far as what you're doing and you're talking about, just to have your ability to be able to hit the button and print one out and not wait for the developer to come in, right? I'm all for it.
Okay, very good. So I have a motion to appropriate up to ten thousand dollars for the CARES, I mean, for the, from the CARES Act for printer scanner.
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
Jim's up for the library part two, the outdoor performance area.
Okay. Just a little brief description, yeah.
Jim's like I am? No, that's. I've spoken with the library director and with Julie as well as far as what we can produce. I know even Mr. Wallnarr, we've talked briefly about, you know, certain pavilions that we would look at, you know, even at Riverfront Park and Lakefront Park, you know, for the use of presidents that we have here. I know there was, I think it was a FEMA grant that came in and they said basically, we're offering this much money for these types of things. And I think one of the encouraging things that they were looking at is that if we could produce some things that we wanted to see under twenty thousand dollars, they would think more favorably upon that for us. When I, at the time, I wasn't thinking about the library, but last week I sat down with Dina and looked what her criteria would be. There's a nice spot in what would be the southeast corner of the lawn. She wants to be able to have, you know, somebody who could have a small stage, do a performance and seat forty people underneath a roof. So we took a look at that and, you know, I don't have a lot of the final details yet, but I'm pretty sure that, you know, doing it in-house, we could build that for under twenty thousand dollars.
Something like what we did down at the council on age, it may be bigger though.
Bigger, yes.
Very good then.
And it would depend on, I mean, I know I haven't spoken specifically with Mr. Menard, but he's so helpful in some areas. I mean, I know we could get him to remove the grass and dig the footings for us and then we could do the rest of the building from that.
Sure.
So it's two, twenty-five thousand, would that be?
Yeah, you can go, yeah.
Can we go up to twenty-five thousand?
Depending on like the price of the wood.
I don't know, lumber might be a hundred dollars or two by a four inch.
Lumber is very expensive. It's up to three hundred percent.
Got that right.
So a motion to approve up to twenty-five thousand dollars for the construction of an outdoor performance facility at the library.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And once you figure that one out, Jim, we'll maybe use that as a template for Lake Street in the rim of you.
All right, it'd be great, Ted. Thank you.
All right. Very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have all business, fire chief contract approval. Gentlemen, at the last meeting.
Yeah, we just went out of, I'm sorry, Mr. Jim, we just went out of order. I just get myself back off, finding my stuff.
Jim, good. We met in executive session and presented a contract to the fire chief that we have come to an agreement with. So I don't know if we need to get into details. We talked about it.
Motion to approve.
Second, bittersweet, but, yes.
Yep, and it is contingent upon your retirement in two years. Just wanted to bring that up a little, a little news out there. But all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chief, very good. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, new business, FY twenty-two appointments. Gentlemen, we have in front of us.
You want it, you, Mr. Chairman, I, you want to go out of order and continue the fire chief so he doesn't have to sit here? He's got an RFP here for the assessment.
That is true. I, it's right over there.
If we could.
Number seven, I can agree with that.
It's number seven, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen. Let me just get to that in my book.
Do we have any of that?
Yeah, it's on the. Very good. Chief, you have the floor?
Thank you. And if I could be retroactive for a minute, I want to thank you for the consideration and respect that was shown to me during the contract negotiations. It's never been cantankerous and never been done with any animosity and I appreciate that a great, great deal.
Very well received.
So, gentlemen, in preparation for my departure, we had started a conversation during the last contract negotiation, was led by Selectman Gasper with the union, to create a full-time captain's position, which we currently do not have. This person would be a truly identified second-in-command, which we have never had and would be working, would be assigned to the daytime hours for pretty much a purpose of me mentoring that person and bringing them along on the administrative and inspectional aspects of the job of the fire chief. That's not to say that if we go ahead and create this position, that the fire captain would necessarily be your choice of the next fire chief. But what it would allow is continuity for the time that I would leave until such time as the board makes a decision in what direction they want to go. So we don't drop the ball. They don't want to have worked this hard and this long to see us backslide at all. So to get that process moving, I present to you a draft RFP for an assessment center. This should look very familiar to you. It is a draft document that was put together by the selectmen and the police chief for the assessment center for police chief. And we modified it when necessary. Didn't need to make any improvements. It was a very good document to work with. But this would get the ball rolling soon. Hopefully you gentlemen will be supportive of this and if I could just make the personal request that we get moving on this sooner than later. There's a lot of moving pieces here. So the RFP would be dispatched under the current writing. Offers would be submitted until July twenty-third. They would be reviewed. And then it's a two-pronged assessment center. A written examination and candidates to continue to, the next portion would have to pass that portion of the test. And then they would sit with a paneled assessment team to go over different scenarios that would tap into their basic knowledge, their leadership capabilities and other administrative type challenges. Ultimately, a ranked list would be presented to me to make the appointment. Subsequent to that, we would also be hiring a firefighter, paramedic to replace the person who was hired as captain. So it's going to be a fundamental change to the structure of the department, but one that should put us in good place as we move to the future.
So if this is put into effect, you know, ASAP, July twenty-third, would that be the date you mentioned?
Could be the opening of the bids, then there's some lead time for the consultant to come in and build up everything. The written exam, to be fair, civil service gives ninety days after the reading list is produced until the written test. I think that would be fair. So we have some delay kind of built into the process. But the goal would be to have this all wrapped up if everything goes well by October.
Okay. I was just looking, July twenty-third, three month, because it says the fire captains' candidates may receive a minimum of three months' notice of the written exam. So if we go into July twenty-third, that kind of like, it could happen sooner than October twenty-third.
Correct. You know. Kind of built in some time there for some issues to present.
You know, and at worst, if we started January first, you know.
With the captain?
With the captain.
That'd be fine.
You know, bringing it in, bringing someone on board at that time.
Right.
You know, I don't know.
So this is going to be, I'm going to be here a few times.
Right, right.
Because the budget currently, fiscally, a twenty-two budget doesn't reflect this position.
That's correct. That was, I was kind of beaten around the bush to get to it, so.
The process would be if we could get the ball rolling with the creation of the RFP in order to secure the services of the consultant, get the assessment center done, get the list of candidates built. By that time, we should be heading towards the fall town meeting. We can sharpen the pencil and come up with an accurate number of whatever budgetary adjustments need to be made. And just so you know, our call volume on the EMS side has decreased from last year and I think that's directly attributable to the pandemic. We went for several months where we didn't get the volume of calls that we had. It has picked up considerably and as far as revenue received, we should be right on track. It's where we were last year.
Right. That was around that, six hundred thousand dollars?
A little less than that, but yes.
But, you know, in general.
Yep.
So, gentlemen, any comments? We'll push this through. Or you want to have a week to read it?
More time, a couple of weeks until our next meeting, that'd be great.
Yeah.
And ask questions.
I would like to do that, you know, that's why I asked that October, January thing, talk about the budget, you know.
Couple of weeks won't hurt.
You know, that sort of thing and.
Make sure we've got everything right and.
Right.
Chief crosses the Ts and dots his Is very well, but, you know, to have that dialogue and make sure that we're all on board would be great. Have that opportunity with the chief.
So we'll bring this up at our next, or I propose we bring it up at our next meeting and make a vote on it. Keep it rolling because, you know, I for myself, I'm okay with this plan.
Excellent.
You know, work is in the contract, so, you know, get it rolling.
Very good.
And we have two years left, so.
Lots to do.
Lots to do. Well, very good. Thank you very much.
Very good, chief. Thank you all.
All right. New business. I'm going to, I'm going to move, just move out of order because we have a gentleman from golf course, Mr. Isaac. Mr. Isaac, how you doing today?
I'm doing fine.
That's good, thank you. That's good. We're going to put you up next in the agenda here to discuss golf capital update and golf wage and classification, if you'd like. How are you this evening?
I'm fine, thank you. Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
What do we have? We could, so golf capital update.
Yeah. I sent a note out to the board of selectmen. It's basically said that revenue plan year to date is going to be significantly above the plan. Golf, golf has a resurgence and rounds are up over twenty percent around the country and it's, and we're feeling the same improvement. So at our last meeting of May twenty-seventh, the golf committee made a unanimous recommendation to use the excess funds available in FY twenty-twenty-one to be allocated to purchase, cash purchase of critical replacement capital items. The committee further recommends replacing the reel grinder and blade knife grinder and at least one triplex mowers. The grinders are over twenty years old. Replacement parts are no longer available and the machines lack adequate safety features. Replacement costs estimate to be seventy thousand dollars with a useful lifespan of about twenty years. The mower we're recommending is a critical, is critical to maintain the turf quality of the greens and the tee areas. The mower is used daily and will replace a ten-year-old, high-maintenance repaired mower. Replacement cost of that mower is estimated to be fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Now, as I mentioned, we're definitely going to exceed our revenue plan and we'll be turning a significant sum of funds back that will go to free cash at the end of this fiscal year. Right now, we have, our overall cost is. Right now, we have, our overall cost is being held roughly to what our plan was. So that leaves us with a, we have an unreserved fund of $100,000 for unanticipated funding. We're basically looking for approval to use that funding to make these capital purchases. Right now, I don't know exactly how much funding is available. We know that $100,000 won't be used, is not required to deal within reserve, any spending we have.
Well, this is how it was kind of explained to me that would be taken 100 grand out of the reserve fund to purchase this equipment, bringing it over to the, whatever line item is associated, R&amp;M equipment line item. The reel, these reel grinders, so they're the sharpening machines for the reels that are used in there?
It puts reels into round, round, to roundness. And then the blade grinders, they sharpen the blades.
Okay, and then, you know, I'm assuming this is an ongoing progress, process, cutting the grass and course. And the other piece of machinery is a triplex mower, so it probably has three reels?
Right.
Okay.
Used for cutting tees and things.
Yes, Mr. Gaspar.
The only, I understand it talks about excess, significant revenue excess from the from the budgeted year and things of the like, which will automatically feed back into the golf surplus, right? It's not, what they call free cash, but it's a surplus, golf surplus account. And they carry $100,000 in the reserve, right? That we were able to make capital purchases out of for emergency uses and things of the like. And I believe the request is here, it looks like the request in total would be $128,370. So we're $28,370 short of the requests that's being presented tonight. Am I correct, Mike?
That is correct.
Well, Ed, when you, what you presented though, I think you showed, so yes, you need the 100, but you also showed what you had budgeted for the year, what you expected to spend, and then how much would be left over, right? So you, what you gave to me, you had $33,000 left in expenses.
That's how much is left over as of right now, so.
As of right now.
And the bills still come in, so I can't anticipate what that's going to be. We still have two articles already approved that has about $36,000 in them. So as long as the, that excess funded, funding that I show you, we don't exceed that in bills being presented in the next couple of weeks, we should be okay.
So I'm just, excess funding. This, the language is not making a lot of sense. So we have $100,000. He's talking about a couple of articles, past articles, that they still have some available cash left. Perhaps, Mr. Isaac, I don't want to speak for you, but perhaps in those two other articles, we'll pretend it's two, it might be three, it might be one, whatever. In their other articles that we've approved, in town meetings approved, is this extra money left inside of those funds. And he's looking for the 100, for the board of selectmen to vote to release the 100,000 out of the current year budget, the reserve, right? To make this capital purchase and then take the $28,370 from previous articles. Because you can't take it from the previous budget that's going to roll into surplus, which needs to be certified and that through the DOR and all that. You can't, we, just because we say we have extra revenue, we haven't even closed out the year yet, right? So you can't take and spend that money until it's been through the DOR and certified and that should go into surplus. Is that correct?
That's correct. No, so what I was saying is he gave, he gave a list of his current year salaries and expenses too, that also showed a surplus.
So he'll have floating money in the budget from other line items that should cover the 28, might, might not. That's what you're talking about, Ed, is that you can't speak for that, those line items yet. So if need be for you to get these two pieces, the three pieces of equipment, you need $28,000 more bucks, right? So you're saying either I'll get it from the remaining balances in my line items from the budget when we close, before we close out the year, I'll expend that to make this purchase once we know better what our bills are for year-end, because we're almost at year-end. If not, I'll take it from the articles that were previously approved to capitalize that $28,000.
We can do that.
There's $36,000 left in those two.
That's fine, as long as we know that we're carrying enough money to accomplish the goal of the committee. Just want to make sure that the numbers are moving okay. And we are going to be spending for the first time the $100,000 in the budget. But because the golf course has done so well, it appears that we'll be in excess of a few hundred thousand bucks this year, right?
Our revenue? Yes.
Okay, so that'll, that's going to replace the 100.
That'll go back to the reserve fund.
It's going to go back to the reserve fund, so it's really, whatever you, if you make 400 this year and you spend the 100 out of the reserve, you really ended up with 300, but you got new equipment. Makes perfect sense. I'm fine with it.
And the reel machines, I heard, are not OSHA-approved, so we need to come up with compliance for that.
Don't want anybody chopping fingers off or grinding fingers off, right?
The problem is that equipment is getting very tight. Ordering, ordering, ordering equipment is long lead times right now, so I have no idea. We'd like to make a commitment now to purchase this equipment. Assuming Julie's review says we got the funding, it is approved and is not an issue.
So Ms. Hebert, I think Mr. Isaac needs a motion from the board to approve, motion to approve the $100,000 in their budget from the reserve.
A transfer, yes. A transfer from their reserve, unforcing expenditures to their corporate budget.
The money, the money's there to expend, so they can do whatever they want with that $100,000 as long as the board approves it, the committee approves it.
Yes. Technically, you have to transfer it to a line item though.
Okay, so you have the line item. Do we need to do all of that, like for a specific line item? So we can make sure that Mr. Isaac and we can get that, because Mr. Isaac just.
Well, we, yeah, we had talked about this previous.
R&amp;M, you don't have a capital equipment line item that I saw anymore.
It was zero now.
Right.
There's a number.
So if.
Right, so we put it in the R&amp;M equipment line item, number 524100.
Is that, will that be sufficient for the DOR? So he doesn't make a purchase and it's in an R&amp;M equipment and it's not necessarily a repair and maintenance, it's a purchase of a new capital piece, it'll be okay? I just want to make sure that he's all set, because Mr. Isaac, he just, he's speaking factual when he says, what he's talking about is supply chains have been all disrupted because of COVID-19. I deal with this pretty much every day, supply chains. And it's impacted everything, whether it be a toothbrush or the lawnmower equipment that he's looking for, or lumber prices and things of the like. That's what's causing the spike in inflation, right? And it's difficult to get anything. You could put something on it today. Look at, for instance, the animal control officer's pickup truck. We've been waiting a year for that and we still aren't having it yet, right? So that's why Mr. Isaac's requesting what he's doing now is to get the ball moving, at least get the purchase order. So if one comes available, they can get it, so. The motion, Mr. Chairman, whatever you're going to need to expend 100,000, give the line item.
So do I have a motion to transfer $100,000 to line item 524100, R&amp;M equipment?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
And Julie will be able to sign a purchase order, whatever.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just take one moment while it's here.
Yes, please.
First of all, really good to see you. It's been a while. I just want to thank you for all you've done for this golf course over the years. The vision to have the thing built and the oversight that you've provided over the years. I know you're a team player and you're part of a team, but you're a real unsung hero for this town, for what you've done for this golf course. I just want to thank you for everything you've done.
It's nice to see that golf is back.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
I couldn't agree with Mr. Warner anymore.
At least for one year.
Mr. Isaac, you've been a phenomenal individual for the town of Acushnet when it comes to this golf course, so thank you very much. I commend Mr. Warner for making that statement and I'll second that statement all day long.
Next, concerning the golf, we have the golf wager classification. And I guess this just pertains to four employees. Julia, I may need a little help on this one, if you can give me a little, a little description.
Yeah, back when we did the budget, they had presented a change in the wager class and we looked at it. We didn't really have time to vote on an actual grade and step for the employees. We accepted the budget as it was, just to get the budget along. And then the town voted to go with the 1.5% increase. So just some of the numbers that were, that were voted as part of their budget differ from what we have in the, in the plan. So we're looking to try to make it all match up. So try to highlight for you guys, if you have it, their wager class summary that shows the golf professional at grade seven, the assistant superintendent at a grade 10, the director of golf at a grade 11, and the course superintendent at a grade 14. And then if you look, I have a copy of the budget that kind of, I mean, when you make a copy, some of the colors kind of look the same, but try to show you where each of those are in the budget, what was voted for a budget. And then also show you our paid plan for FY 22 and where they line up with like a grade and stuff that matches what they had for a budget for town meeting. The only ones that are kind of in between steps are the director of golf and the course superintendent. So those are kind of, you know, between two steps.
It's true. Look, I know we've, you know, empowered the golf committee to really do a lot of oversight, but I got to be honest with you. I'm, I take, and I like to dive into it a little bit more, the director of golf. But I'm just looking at this ranking and the scores and some of this. I'd like to really get a better sense of how these numbers were derived at. And this isn't to pit one against the other, but I would look at the importance of the course superintendent is obviously, if you don't have grass, you know, if you don't have a turf, you don't have a golf course. But by the same token, the director of golf is such a critical, critical position to the overall, you know, oversight of the golf course and, you know, pushing product and things of that nature. I don't know, it just seems to be a little bit out of balance and I'd like to learn a little bit more about that. And I just, I put a high value on that position. Because I've seen what it was when you didn't have somebody who knew what they were doing. And when you do have somebody who does know what they're doing, you know, we're talking about how numbers are up and, you know, beverages doing well and things of that nature. I just think that that's something that needs an additional look. How do I present that without meddling or getting into where you all are, you know?
Mr. Gaspar?
I would prefer more time to look at the whole thing as far as this goes. Again, Mr. Chairman, no disrespect, it was Father's Day, it was tough. We got the meeting stuff, some of it was in an email.
Oh, yeah.
PDF attached, but some of it ended up on the desk for Thursday night because Friday was a holiday for town employees. There's a lot of, there's a lot of different things in here that take a lot of time to look through. But I'm happy to sit through it and look at different things and figure out where we've been and speak to golf committee members.
Now, I just have one comment or question. These salary, even with the increases that was approved at town meeting? I mean, we budgeted this money for these increases?
We budgeted this, yes.
Already? Right, because I see FY 2020 town meeting vote. So we increased, we, you know, we approved these salaries as they're presented to me right now at the meeting. Okay. All right, well then, let's, we'll table it till the next meeting and make a decision at that time? Is that good for everyone here? Excellent. Well, very good. Well, I think that wraps it up for the golf this time. Thank you very much, Mr. Isaac. Have a good evening now. Do you want me to move?
We've done it all night, this is.
We've done it all night, right, you have a mind for some, well. We're going to take things out of order a little bit. Kathy, we could get you out of here sooner than later.
Thank you very much. That's very nice of you.
Very good.
So I'm here to talk about, as you all saw probably, the New Bedford increase the water and sewer rates for FY 22. The water rate from New Bedford is going to go to $4.10 and sewer, the wastewater will go to $5.52, which is a 2.5% increase over last year. With that being said, I did an analysis. I hope you all have the analysis.
Okay, let me catch up a second.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so I'm going to go through water first, if that's okay. So what I did was, I take, I've been doing the same thing for the past three years since we moved to a tier rate. I look at what I, I come up with what is the best estimated income for billing for FY 22. And I based that this time on a five-year average and sometimes I usually do that on three. But with COVID last year, with the pandemic, the usage was so high that I didn't feel comfortable assuming that our usage would be that high again, that everybody's going back to work and school hopefully, permanently, forever. So the estimated billing in the FY budget, and the only thing that changed on the FY 22 budget, they took out the $60,000 reserve, and I'm going to assume we're not going to use that as we have been in the past. So if we have no rate increase from us, the town of Acushnet, we will only increase our surplus approximately $20,000. I don't feel comfortable with that, so I gave all of you some information on if we increase it by 15% each tier rate. So it'd go to 615, 665, and 715, which would be a 2.5% increase from our rates as they currently are. That would give you a bottom line increase of approximately $56,000. The other thing I said was if you didn't feel comfortable with that, we did a 25% rate increase on each tier to 625, 675, and 725. That would give you an $80,000 increase in surplus. In the past, New Bedford, this past year has changed out all of their water meters. So I'm still getting numbers because what happened was their water meters were working, they weren't working. So our, I don't know if the numbers that they were charging us were a little low, a little high. So until we get more information for the next six months and I get a good usage, I'll feel much better with knowing when to bet for probably bills. Because in the past, we've always had a little extra in the budget. And I assume we will next year, so I assume the surplus will be a little bit higher. And this is if we spend every penny in our budget, which I hope we don't.
Let's see, what was, well, we haven't closed out the year yet, so we don't know what we built for surplus this year in water, correct?
We do not know.
So.
I did give you analysis for the past, I have it up through FY 20.
But this.
So Selectman Gaspar, the only thing is on the water surplus where I should do $43,944, which was the increase in surplus from FY 19 to FY 20. That actually would have been $103,000, but we took $60,000 out to buy a truck. So that, that's pretty good. That was a good surplus year. It doesn't show it in this number, but if you think about what we took out of the reserve. And what makes me a little concerned is we did decide to go ahead and take some money out of the surplus to do the Nye Avenue watering. So that's going to show up in FY 21. So at the end of the year, when Big Town Accountant gives me these numbers, I know we're not, we're going to have a negative surplus. Because we took out money for that and we also took out money for the risk and resiliency evaluations that are working.
Yeah, but you can't have, you, you, it's starting to calculate things a little bit differently than what we did because we used to take it from surplus through a warrant article, right? Which we still do, but we're extracting it from that current year surplus account, so it's dangerous. You can't really do that, and I'll tell you why. If you take two, the articles that we talked about, the truck or whatever it was, we purchased a water truck or whatever it was and the resilience plan of $75,000, $65,000 bucks. If, if you do that calculation and you say, well, I'm going to do it that way. If you don't build that surplus, you have a, you can't close the account with a negative number. You can't have a negative number in an enterprise fund, right?
Well, no, no, I guess I didn't make myself that, we won't have a negative number. I'm just saying that like if you looked at from FY 17 to 16 on sewer, we actually had a decrease in our surplus. So, yeah, we're not going to have, our budget's not going to be negative, obviously. But our surplus, instead of adding to our surplus, we're going to take away from our surplus.
No, I understand.
So I'm saying in FY 21, we will definitely have a negative amount. We will not have $1.1 million. It's going to go down.
No, I know, but it's not, you're saying a negative amount, but it's not a negative amount. It's a negative amount versus what you purchased versus what your surplus is. Is that the negative amount that you're talking about, the two balancing? Because you, we didn't spend, we have a million dollars, 1.123 million bucks.
Correct, so I'm saying in FY 21, I don't, I expect that 1.1 million will be lower.
Oh, of course it's going to be, because we have articles for expenditures.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm not. I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm not.
The surplus, well, the surplus, of course the surplus is going to come down as you make expenditures, especially if you're going to be doing water infrastructure. And I talked a little bit about that five-year plan, two hundred thousand, but we're, we're generating. So before you increase rate, especially with water, make it sound like we have a negative number. We won't have a negative number because in in previous years, we've been generating a hundred thousand plus in surplus. So if you're generating a hundred thousand dollars plus in surplus in water, why would I increase rate when you're still at a very reasonable surplus rate going forward?
Because going forward, I expect you're only going to add twenty thousand dollars next year, and that does not include articles or any spending. That is just our budget to what we will bill out, and that's not, twenty thousand is not a lot. And also you guys, you did not increase your rates in FY twenty-one, just to let you know. So we actually skipped one year in water. We actually skipped many years in water.
We've skipped a lot of years in water.
Which is, which is great, and I personally would rather come up here and say, please don't increase rates. I think we can, but I don't feel that way this year. But it's not my decision, that is your decision. I'm presenting this information, just if you decide not to increase your rates, your surplus will be approximately twenty thousand dollars.
Kathy, do you know like just, what's the average bill?
What's the average bill?
Yeah, yeah, so you're saying like.
So if it's a lot of the, I said the people that have two families or the older community, it's about eighty dollars every quarter to an envelope on water.
And that's, and that's.
This would not make, this is only fifteen cents, so on a five hundred dollar bill, that's only a dollar.
And the, the, most people are in the first tier, is that what that's first page?
Two-thirds. Roughly two-thirds of the audience on water uses is is in the zero to fifteen hundred, if that's still applicable.
It's actually based on the past couple of years, fifty-five percent of our users fall in that first tier. Ten percent in the second, thirty-five percent in the top tier. And the top tier is a lot of our businesses, obviously. The other thing to consider is, as you're building the surplus, which I think is great, we're going forward with changing out the water mains, which is something we definitely should be doing. If you do not keep increasing the rates that we hear and there, how are you going to replace the water mains?
How are we going to water?
Replace the water mains, you got to, if you want to continue.
Oh, no, I understand that, I mean, that's, that's what the million dollars is for, right? And you do have to build a surplus. I didn't, I'll be honest with you, Mr. Chairman, I didn't think that we were at this, at this level, and we don't really know what level. We're assuming twenty thousand, is that what you're assuming is a twenty thousand dollar surplus based on the numbers that you have?
Based on the numbers, and I think it will obviously be higher. I'm more conservative, as you know, you've worked with me many, many years, I'm a conservative person. I think it will be a little bit higher, but you're talking twenty to fifty thousand adding, not a hundred thousand.
I didn't, I didn't really get into looking at the budget, Mr. Chairman, versus what the numbers are here. And I guess I would need to digest those numbers a little bit more on what's going on. Because if I generated, if we generated, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, not this year, but the previous year, I think it was more than that in surplus. Do you have that number, Ms. Hebert, what we generated in surplus the year before two thousand twenty?
Like how much you you gained in surplus for the water?
So year over year.
It's usually about a hundred thousand.
In FY twenty, it was forty-three thousand, nine forty-four, in FY nineteen, it was seventy thousand, nine thirty-six.
Yeah, but see, that's the, see, you're using it as, but I think it's because of the way they're giving you surplus numbers now because they're taking off what you're doing in articles instead of taking it from the previous surplus. Say you have a million dollars and you spend two hundred, you just take the two hundred thousand off, you have eight hundred thousand, and then your year running closes out, you generate a hundred thousand dollars, you push that into surplus, and it puts you back to nine hundred. I think there's this magic math trick going on on how things are being done with surplus and, I mean, I, I'd have.
It's, it's the undesigned bonus balance is is surplus, it's undesigned. So you're right, if you're designating some of your money for articles, it's going to reduce that fund balance.
The fund balance, but not the close, not the surplus generated from the year, so you get a real picture.
Like you could look at like a profit loss, and that would be a different number, if that's what you're talking about. But if you're, if you're looking at your surplus account, it's technically the undesigned fund balance of the water. So if you, if you designate money at town meeting, it's going to come down, it's going to reduce that number.
The surplus number on this side, not what you're generating the previous year. You can't, you can't, you can't project a negative number, and you can't have a negative. There's no way we went from creating a hundred and ten thousand dollars the previous year to only generating twenty thousand dollars this year. My question is, where's that eighty thousand dollars gone? That's why I need to, I need to look at the budget, reference all of that stuff, so I just, I'd like more time to do it. Or I can just not vote rate increase, though. I need, I need to look and digest numbers a little bit.
Mr. Wong, do you have any comments?
No, I mean, if Mr. Gaspar needs some more time, I'm fine with that. But I just think intuitively in past history, when, not that I'm for rating increases, but there's things, you know, you see what we're getting from the city of New Bedford. If we don't keep up with that pace, we're going to be back to where we were in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, where people get sticker shock, and then we get a huge problem.
Well, we made, we made a good, we made a good adjustment when we took over the board on Public Works. And I'm just concerned about how the numbers have been shown. And I think I need to talk to the town accountant, Ms. Silver, about that and trying to figure out where.
I don't want to be truer happy when it comes to, to rate, believe me. But by the same token, I want to learn from past mistakes of the town, you know, not keeping up with where we need to be.
Right.
Real quick, I know you want to take time, but on the sewer, if you do look at it, I am asking for no increase in the sewer. And that is because of sewer. Based on like the five-year average and based on our budget for next year, I'm assuming rule, you have about an eighty thousand dollar increase in our surplus in sewer. And we have beat up our sewer uses over the past few years.
See, that's, that catches me by surprise, it's counterintuitive to what I thought would actually happen. We were always really, really good with water. And then I figured we were on the brink with the sewer because the last time we talked, we only generated like thirty-five thousand bucks in surplus, and now are we generating eighty thousand bucks when sewer has?
So last year in sewer, we increased our surplus by fifty-six thousand dollars last year. But we did, we did an eleven percent increase in the rate in twenty twenty.
I remember I've done one increase.
It went from fourteen thousand up to fifty-six thousand. And next year, based on what I'm seeing with New Bedford billing and our budgeting, I think we can do eighty thousand.
Yeah, New Bedford's, New Bedford, when it comes to sewer, we're tied to New Bedford, they can't change that rate. So they can only go up very incrementally, and the rest is on us as far as the budget, sewer budget goes. And that's where we need to get a handle on things because that's really what's determining the high sewer rate in Acushnet versus the sewer rate that's coming from New Bedford. If you look at our sewer rate from New Bedford, it's minuscule compared to what we're charging. I mean, five forty-four, five fifty-two is the sewer rate, and we're double on the lowest rate. And there's not much going on in sewer, so we, we, we should be taking a look at that as well and seeing what's, what's happening within the budget that's reflecting a hundred percent increase from the rate from the city of New Bedford to our residents. You follow me? And that's why I'm hesitant to stop pulling triggers on, especially, I figured with that sewer, water, I mean, water's still relatively cheap, I'd just like to take a better look at the numbers. When do you need to vote?
I was, I thought you wanted to vote in by July first. That was why I'm here now.
When do you need to know for, for billing purposes, because that's really what it.
I, for billing purposes, you, this would take effect July first, and I do not bill, the next one would be July first to September thirtieth. So I would not need an answer until September thirtieth.
Right, well, we have time is what I'm saying.
Okay. Motion to, I figured so.
Take any action tonight.
Kathy, I apologize to you because I always do sit with you and go through this.
On the favor, aye.
Aye, I'm sorry, I was just apologizing to Ms. Silver because normally we do, we always do sit down. But I know when I spoke to Dan last week, he was out paving and stuff, and he said that you were out taking up your vacation time, so I just kind of let.
Yeah, I was out for a couple of weeks, this is my first day.
Oh, so see, he was right, so that's why I was like, well, I can't go and see you and discuss this stuff with you. We usually hash this stuff out amongst each other and work through the details.
I'd be happy to sit down for you and maybe Melissa, because I agree with you, I need to understand that spreadsheet that comes from the finance department.
Yeah, things have changed, it just doesn't seem like it's changed for the right. It's, it's a little bit screwy out with how that's being calculated, and I don't, I don't.
Yeah, maybe if we sit down the three of us, we can understand.
I think we need to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Happy to do that.
Good.
Thank you.
Don't forget about the trash contract.
We got a waste management contract approval?
Oh, Ms. Hebert has it, I, I'm, my end is just with the lawyers.
Yep.
What's changed? We voted this already, didn't we?
No, you voted CMAS, and you, you voted, you voted the bid, that's the waste management one, the bid, but we just put it, we had to put it into an actual contract.
Okay, motion to approve. Is, is, are you, have you reviewed this document?
I have reviewed the document, I am fine with it, Ms. Hebert reviewed it with the lawyers.
Is this the one that went back and forth about carrying insurance or something?
Yeah, there's a lot of insurance stuff on this.
And they said that we needed to carry insurance, but we were saying, or you were saying, that we weren't needed to carry insurance. So we've resolved all of that, that's what this is, Ms. Silver?
Yes.
So this has all been resolved in this contract now, we're clean, and we, we will carry insurance?
Yeah, it's, it's more like who's, who's listed as an additional insured on the contract. So essentially, Waste Management is doing the hauling, so we, we didn't want to have to list people as additional insured on our policy where they were doing the work, so we're making them do it.
And, and then I know there was some confusion though, because we do actually enter the site. Is that the same thing that I'm, we're talking about? Is, I think you said that we were going to need, or you, might have you said that we were going to need it because we actually go into the facility or something like that to do our own drop-offs? And that's where the.
That was, that was with CMAS.
That was CMAS.
Because we take our contracts in.
And that's been resolved as well?
That was done, yes.
You guys have signed it, yeah.
So we're all set.
CMAS is all set.
Excellent.
Yeah.
All right, very good.
And the cost hasn't changed?
No.
Okay.
And so the insurance issue Julie's all set, has been wiped out.
I made a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Chairman, Kathy, before you go, if you could just check with Dan. We've gotten a number of requests for bill parking signs on Spokum Street, from Main Street, about halfway down. Maybe could check into that and see if we can address that.
You want to just, no parking signs?
Uh, yeah, well, we need, we need, we need no parking signs.
Oh, there's no, there's none there, there's none there?
Yeah, we talked about it at our last meeting when we transferred the license, is that when we brought that in? And, and it is happening again, and I'm glad he's bringing that up because I passed by it, and I'm like, I guess nobody's listening, but I guess we didn't put up the signs, but I know you've been on vacation, you're usually the one that makes sure things are getting done and not off the checklist yet, call and make sure it's getting done.
I will make sure.
So we, we were looking for, you know, no pocket signs, was it only the south side or was it?
Yeah, it's, I guess it was the south side, yeah.
So you're talking on Spokum Street?
Right, from Main Street down about halfway down, so like there's a handicap sign right around there.
Because the people, obviously, bars are open now.
So they're parking on the streets.
And they're parking on that sidewalk where you don't really belong, parking on sidewalks. But it's so close to the corner, and that corner's already getting really bad and adjusted. And with those cars being there, it's just causing more havoc and people are crossing, and it's, it's bad, it's not good.
Did you tell Mr. Manow how many signs you wanted, or we just put in for a couple?
Probably you need at least two, because if you put one seventy-five feet down the road, they're going to say, oh, I didn't see that, I turned around. Yeah, so you're going to need one twenty-five feet from the corner.
Okay.
At least twenty to twenty-five feet, so they can't say they don't see the sign.
If we have them in stock, I'll have them up this week, and if not, I'll make sure they're ordered.
Right, thank you.
Thanks.
If there's something temporary, we can put up as well, just to show the residents there that we're.
We can put bascades up if we have to.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kathy.
Good night.
Okay, on the new business, we can go to FY twenty-two appointments. It'll matter if we could each read a page, be appreciated, and we can go from there. I don't know if Mr. Wong, you want to start?
Sure. Okay, Mr. Chairman, motion to appoint Robert Gilmore, Richard Miranda of the Agricultural Commission. Do you want me to just go read all the names and then we just do one big?
Yep, yep.
Agricultural Commission, Robert Gilmore, Richard Miranda, ADA Coordinator, James Merritt, Animal Control Inspector Rebecca Tomlinson, Animal Control Inspector Assistant, Ann Easternbrook. Board of Appeals, Mark Cinerizio, Board of Appeals, Karen Westgate, that's one I'd like to hold. No disrespect to Ms. Westgate, we just want to make sure that she's committed. Board of Appeals, alternate, Amanda Baptiste, Board of Appeals, alternate, Charles Leonard. Bylaw Review Committee, Raymond LeBlanc, Bylaw Review Committee, Karen Westgate, hold. Bylaw Review Committee, John Howcroft, Bylaw Review Committee, James Merritt, Bylaw Review Committee, Dave DeRoche. Bylaw Review Committee, Town Clerk, Pam Levante, Community Preservation Committee, Chad LeClaire, CPC, Mark Cinerizio, CPC, Amanda Baptiste, CPC, Lisa Leonard, Concom, Mark Broder, Concom, Heidi Lynn Pelletier, Concom, Everett Philla, Concom, Richard Pimentel, Constable Joseph Latimer, COA, Jerry Bergeron, Paulette Hudson, Maurice Sampson, Carol Simkin, COA Director, Heather Sylvia, Cultural Counsel, Amanda Baptiste, Michelle Watts, Deputy Building Inspector, Nathan Darling, Deputy Wire Inspector, Frank Knox, Victor Pereira, Election Member, Luis Benoit, Linda Blaze, Christine Brown, Donna Brown. Motion to appoint all of those with the exception of the hold.
So, most.
Mr. Chairman? I just got a question on the Conservation Commission. Ryan Resendes is not on the list, but we reappointed him at the same time we appointed another member.
Pimentel?
Yeah, Richard, I think it was Richard Pimentel. Ryan Resend, Ryan Resendes is not on the list, and we appointed him at the same meeting. It's in the minutes that we did, that's Pimentel. Is there a reason why Ryan Resendes is not on the reappointment?
I think he's under, he was taking over another position.
Well, he doesn't want to be on Conservation Commission?
No, he, he does, but he's taking over somebody else's term, sorry, term.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, these are the expired ones.
Well, I thought they all just expired at the same time, it looks like it's all three, all twenty twenty-four.
All these particular members are, but that wasn't another one.
Okay, okay, fine. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mind the next page, Mr. Hebert?
Yep, the continuance of election members. Adrian, Adriash?
Allison.
Andre?
Allison Brunet, oh, Andre Corey.
I start with Andre Corey.
Oh, because maybe you.
All election members, Diane Kudo, Rosemary Dupont, Margaret Fernandez, Diane Ferreira, Carolyn Fortin, Riley Fortin, Russell Goyette, Carol Gravanas, Paulette Hudson, Kristen.
Yep.
She says, I think it's Keo.
Kirsten, I can't pronounce her last name. Q?
I think it's Keo.
Yeah, Keo. Beth Kalan-Gerwitch, Lexie Labonte, Donna Labrode, Elizabeth Lever, Mary LeBeau, Carolyn Lemieux, Lauren Lemieux, June Lemrise, Ashley Leonard, Pauline Lincoln, Maria Moore, Margaret Motta, Frances Mottl, Susan Perry, Fay Philla, Everett Philla Junior, Priscilla Santos, John Tavaz, Michelle Texera, Aleen Todd, Joyce Wiley, all election members. Election Number Registered, Joseph Costa, Election Number Registered, Janine Soucy, EMA Director, Gerald Bergeron, Energy Committee, Julie Hebert, Energy Committee, James Merritt, Energy Committee, David Wonau, Enforcement Agent for the Selectmen, James Merritt, Finance Committee, Michael Boucher, Finance Committee, Susan Delgado, Finance Committee, Eric McGlynn, Finance Committee, Jacqueline Stanley, Forest Warden, Kevin Gallagher, Golf and Operational Committee, John Aberay Junior, Golf Management and Operational Committee, Robert Ferreira, Golf Operational Committee, David Flynn, Manuel Gulat, and Ed Isaac, both of Golf Operation Committee.
Mr. Gaspar, I just have a different page, there's two people at the top that weren't mentioned, Allison Brunet and Rachel Charbonneau, and then the election members, do you have that on your page?
No, I do not, sir.
Do you have those?
I do, yeah.
You do?
Yeah.
Who are you looking for?
Right at the top, Election Member Allison Brunet and Election Member Rachel Charbonneau.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, David did those on his, on his page.
So yours, she just changed a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry. So there's something different on our pages, Mr. Chairman, so thank you for correction. Allison Brunet and Rachel Charbonneau. Excellent, motion to approve?
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and we'll move on.
Herring Warden.
Herring Warden, Scott, someone wrote over his last name, Per.
Perdego.
Per.
Perdego.
Perdego. Historical Commission, Madeline.
Gabush.
Gabush. Historical Commission, Dunston Eric Whitlock, Inspector of Garages, Kevin Gallagher. There's another question on this one, Insurance Advisory Committee Retiree, Suzie Picard. She's, she's still in Bristol County or?
I have, I have not a town resident, not an employee, I don't know if that can happen.
It's, um, so for the IAC Board, um, there has to be one retiree designated, and so she is a retiree for the town of Akushnet.
Okay.
I thought, I thought it was, I thought that was the old police chief.
Yeah, and I just blanked his name again.
Petrus.
Oh, Petrus, thank you.
My Petrus.
Yeah, um, he chose to foregovern and Sue picked up on it, on his behalf.
Okay, so they don't have to be a resident and they don't have to be an employee. Okay, that's fine.
Very good. Um, my Superintendent Inspector of Pest Control.
Dave, would you be giving your wallet to Mr. Manau for the first question?
Uh, Open Space Committee, Mark Cinerizio. Open Space Committee, Robert Roger Junior. Parking Officer, Julie Hebert. Phase Two Stormwater Committee, Mark Cinerizio. Phase Two Stormwater Committee, James Merritt. Phase Two Stormwater Committee, Daniel Manad. Portable Sign Committee, James Merritt. Safety Committee, Joseph Korea. Kevin Gallagher. Julie Hebert. James Merritt. Daniel Manad. Christopher Richmond. Sealer of Weights and Measures, Theodore Machado. Shellfish Warden, Harbor Master. Robert Maderas. Soil Conservation Board, David DeRoche. Kevin Gaspar Senior. David Wonau. Soil Removal Enforcement Officer, Pat Hannan. Special Police Officer for New Bedford Waterworks, Daniel Manad. Street Naming Committee, Kevin Gallagher. Christopher Richmond. Tax Title Custodian, Christine Mueller. Town Accountant, Melissa Ford. Town Treasurer Collector Assistant, Jasmine Benefito. Wait, uh, we got Veterans Agent, Ronald Cormier. I missed Town Accountant.
That was this.
Assistant Nicholas Monticello. Uh, Weir. Tilcon, Capaldi, PJ Keating. Nancy Franco. Claudio Moco. Jen Olivera. Bryant Riberio. And Jonathan Sousa.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Tax Title Custodian is Catherine Mueller. I don't know if yours, I think you said Kristen.
No.
I don't know if your paperwork.
Okay, Tax Title Custodian, Catherine Mueller.
And then Old Colony School Committee, I didn't, I don't know if you mentioned that district.
No, we don't have to do that one, so.
Remember?
We did it already, right?
Maybe we change it after fact, because we already did that the last time.
We just made the appointments, the reappointments at town meeting, so that was good enough?
Right. Yes, we don't have to do those again.
Okay, well, okay, very good.
Okay, I have a motion.
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
And the, as far as the Soil Conservation Board, what I meant ago, that really can't be had until the AG votes the bylaw, right?
Yeah, it's not, it's not official until the AG approves it, but we're okay to.
I've been waiting for that to get to pass on to the Attorney General Office from the Town Clerk's office.
Yes.
Minutes of the meeting, town meeting, okay.
Yep.
Okay, number four, on the new business, moving along, uh, social media policy. First reading, we've all been presented with a social media policy concerning the town of Akushnet. Now, I haven't had a chance to review it in detail, but, uh, does any people who have? Go forward.
Looks pretty comprehensive and straightforward to me. I mean, the thing is, uh, yeah, I think this is, this is fine.
Long as you're not infringing on anybody's First Amendment rights and the constitutional rights, right? And it says right inside of it that you're not doing that. I've read through it thoroughly. I think it looks pretty good. I don't think there's anything that's outside of the scope of what should be recommended by employees, really. When it comes to social media, anyway.
Well, if you gentlemen want to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Passes. Touch upon FY twenty-two goals and objectives. I don't know if we've all received, I've received the paper. I give a number of different items listed. And, um, I think we can take a look at it and decide how we want to proceed. I think there's a number of them that are very, you know, right up the top, we have multi-family special residential development bylaw.
Mister, Mister, I don't have the piece of paper here, but, um, I, I think I seen it in a PDF maybe.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have that in this here. But it doesn't matter, I, I, you know, I just didn't know what was, what's the deal with multi-family? I mean, who's, who's, who's advocating multi-family? Cause it took, you wanna turn the town into a city or? We talked about this when we were talking about townhomes, and I think we all agreed that townhomes would be something that would be acceptable. But multi-families, I think that we already allow two families duplexes and things of the like, but what is that?
Well, the term I think is, uh, was developed pretty much from, uh, when we had that meeting with the, the, what was developer? Where it, um, is a Rick Miller?
Yeah.
Name, his attorney, I believe he has Marky as an attorney, that they proposed, there was a bylaw, a proposed bylaw change that was put up on the screen momentarily. That did say multi-family. It was again repeated by the, um.
Mister Divinian.
Mister Divinian, as that way. If it's the wrong terminology, you know, we can move forward. I would like to see what the proposed bylaw, you know, what they're proposing, I guess, as we move on, you know?
But we don't make bylaws for developers, do we?
No, we don't, well, they, we don't make bylaws for developers.
I mean, I think if we're setting goals and objectives, I think, I think it's something that we, we, I think we're pretty much all in agreement with. It's the townhome concept of bylaw.
If I remember correctly.
Stuff like that, I'm still am, and I think we talked about fifty-five and older and things of the like.
Fifty-five and older, was that correct?
Yeah, that seems pretty reasonable as well. Um, I think that's a good starting point for us as far as where we're at, the community is offering, you know, fifty-five and older communities and townhomes and things of the like, and see how you make out with that, but.
I think it's a little more targeted than just multi-family special residential bylaw, right? I mean, I think we had a legitimate business owner in town who's got a property.
Yeah, I, I know, I just seen that, I was blown away by.
Gifts to gives, and to me, it's a little more, it's a little more focused and targeted, right?
Yeah.
I think some of this stuff might not materialize even for consideration until we get to the next stuff, which is the town planner, right? So some of the stuff, I think we can park, um, until we get the town planner on board, and maybe we can have a planning session with that person.
That's correct.
Right, and, uh, so, anyway.
Uh, second on the list is solar pilot programs, which have been touched upon in the past.
Mister Chairman, I offered that one up just again because it's something we just heard from Jim. We've got all these different, um, uh, solar developments coming into town. The solar proponents ask about it. I don't know what the direction the town wants to go into, other than, uh, we've got mechanisms, mechanisms in place where we're not essentially relying on the money for our general fund. So, uh, the solar pilots might be beneficial to us in some shape or form, especially if it requires, you know, if it allows us to recoup more money than we would normally. So, you know, again, I, I advance that just for, to get our act together on that, in that regard.
Yep.
I, I think that we did talk about that in the past, solar pilot programs, and I think there was some appetite to have somebody in. Mister Blake, I think, was somebody who's been doing it, Town Council was doing it and has been instrumental in other communities discussing that and how you would come up with the formulations. And I think that we, I know we absolutely talked about it because of the school roof is gonna require an eighty-four, eighty-five thousand dollar funding mechanism for fifteen years if we went ahead with that, that plan that we had initiated, five hundred thousand either from free cash or stabilization for our down payment, where our responsibility was one point three million, right? The fifty-two percent or whatever we were responsible for. Um, and we came up with that fifteen-year plan, borrowing plan, and that came out to like eighty-three, eighty-four thousand bucks. Um, and we're not really capturing that right now with the current revenue from, from there. So I think that, um, Mister Wonau's point, we, we absolutely had that discussion on solar pilots. So I would like to continue that discussion, um, so that we do have a mechanism in place that we are capturing a certain amount of revenue um, every year, and we guarantee that, because usually the solar pilots go for twenty years, and if we're gonna finance for fifteen years, it would work right in that wheelhouse, so I'm all for that as well.
And next on was parking lot development, and this all kinda ties into the Salkum Street idea of redevelopment and put some money down there with water, infrastructure redevelopment. Taking over that part of the town, not taking it over, but redeveloping that part of the town.
Rehab it.
You know, rehab it.
I think we.
Making it almost a gateway to, uh, to Akushnet from New Bedford. Over the bridge, up Salkum Street.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, you know, we talked a little bit about the parking lot and purchasing that, but I, you know, I think there's, you know, you need to spend money where it needs to be spent, and, and you need to do what's already existing for infrastructure first and, and, and look at that. But I think it's something that we could look at and have a discussion on it. But I think that, you know, before you spend three, four hundred thousand dollars on something else, you need to, you need to get your act together and rehab the road and infrastructure on the road before you start just, you know, ponying up money to other places and.
Right, well, this all kinda rolls around, I feel, rolls around as Mister Wonau said, uh, get the planner in and establish an idea and a direction, and, uh, and go from there. See how it's all gonna pan out, if the money's gonna work, if it isn't gonna work, or, or what we, how we divide it all up.
Right.
Because we are still gonna be getting, receiving some monies, right, Julie? From Kia, from.
Yeah.
Is that part of that five billion dollars that Baker has that he's gonna be doling out to cities and towns across the Commonwealth? So, uh, we'll be getting a fair share of that money, so.
You sure it's gonna be fair?
Well. So in other areas, we touched upon for, for talking about, uh, uh, outside dining opportunities. Kinda tied into Salkum Street area, downtown area, uh, mental health situation, uh, relating from the COVID.
Yeah, you know, like. What is, what's that all about, mental health?
So, so Mister Chairman, the last meeting, it brought us the subject of, you know, there's a number of programs, you know, around the country where public safety is, is looking at how they respond to situations, either at home or whatever, you know, in the home.
Mm-hmm.
And it's really innovative programs that don't treat, that treat, um, you know, that's the word I'm looking for, incidences less as a crime, but more as a health issue. And it, you know, and they look at ways, you know, who they're actually sending to the response. And I just feel like, you know, what we've gone through with the pandemic and, you know, with that, are we equipped as a town to handle that? And, and, you know, is it something that's worth discussing, to take a different look at, things like that? And, you know, be the next logical extent, extension of how we treated COVID with the, um, you know, testing and vaccinations. And this would be the final look at it, and it may be something that we can't even approach. But as a small town with dedicated fire and police, you know, EMS and police, it might be an opportunity to make an impact in people's lives. Kind of like the chief did also with the opiate awareness and things of that nature.
Mm-hmm.
Just seemed to me like a worth, a worthwhile discussion.
Uh, moving on, we got the Lake Street, uh, development.
Speaks for itself.
That speaks for itself. You know, also the sevens tied into it with food trucks. I don't know if that's an idea that's being put on there or.
It is, and it's just like, do we need, do we need a bylaw change there? Do we need to promote, you know, is it a common vic's license or, or, you know, if, what can we do to promote that type of stuff?
I think we have, well, we, we do common vic licenses, and that's for food trucks, isn't it?
Technically, the common vic is more towards restaurant sit, sit-down people. We have hawkers and peddlers, which.
Oh, that's the one.
That we don't technically, the state, the state gives that one out first, and then they would come back to us and just let the chief, the police chief know that they got the license from the state. We don't technically, because that's like an ice cream truck.
Right.
You know, the, they have to do that with the state, it's like sixty dollars or something, and then they.
Yeah, but the ice cream truck is constantly moving around and it's not parked at a location, so maybe that's something.
Yeah, I don't know if that's like what it would have helped, that's what I wanna look at, right?
Something we need to, we need to, we should, we should definitely look into it so that you don't get ten people in one location, right? As far as, as a peddler's thing goes.
There's an opportunity to promote it, um, you know, in years past, we looked at, okay, do we turn over a town hall parking lot on a Saturday to a farmer's market? There really wasn't an interest there, right? If we were to allow somebody who had a food truck, you know, business owner in town, would we do something like that? Would we allow it at Riverview Park? Would we allow it at, you know?
Yeah, Lake Street.
Lake Street, whatever, right?
There's actually, there's just one now that, um, sits out in the Free Town Post Office now in the parking lot. I saw him the other day, I didn't go, you know, order anything, when I was out in Free Town, and I stopped to do a mailing, and I looked at him, I'm like, that's, that's all.
You know, you're a lot of young people graduated from Old Colony, maybe it's an opportunity for somebody from town, you know, to, to, to get into a business. I don't feel like we know how to handle it or even suggest it, right?
Well, and, and it's a good point, because you may not wanna have them, for instance, at Polpac, because they already have.
Yeah.
Uh, the time of the second stand there.
So it's gonna be a.
Right.
Hawkers and Peddles license, but they'll have to do an application for a certain location, and it's only good for that certain location, right? And then this way there, you don't have multiple people trying to just cram in there and get, you know, cutthroat any other guy, right? I mean, a girl or whoever's doing it, um.
Right, cause like you look at, at Fort Phoenix, they used to have same thing, like they would have two food trucks there. Um, cause they don't have a concession stand or anything. And they were always busy, like, I think one had just hot dogs and hamburgers or something.
That's cause it's a beach and you have a thousand people on the beach, you can't possibly make enough food in a food truck.
Hot dogs and hamburgers and stuff, and then just one, some clam cakes or something like something, so.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I, I mean, I'm always, I'm, I'm a big advocate of business people, so if somebody wants to go out there and do something.
Uh, I mean.
Make a few bucks and, and serve the residents of the Akushnet with some good, good food and.
Quality of life stuff, right? That's right.
Have a nice day.
That's right. Uh, social media opportunities, well, tonight we passed the social media policy. And then, yeah, we wanna try to expand upon Facebook on the page, I mean, for the town, Facebook.
Yeah, Facebook. We need to be careful of our social media presence, like, it's one thing, like, the chief does at public safety and things of the like, but we, we don't need everyone getting involved with a social media page from every day. I mean, I think you're, you're skating down a dangerous path when you have people that are able to respond to it, because even though we have a social media policy where we can't, um, you know, degrade anybody and things of the like, we all know what happens on social media. And once those folks are gonna be able to, and you're gonna, and we don't need you, for instance, or anybody, in, in my opinion, dedicated to just sitting there staring at a computer screen, monitoring a social media thing, uh, you know, like, uh, a, a group, like All Things Akushnet group, where you're monitoring what people are saying and what people are doing, responding. They can go to their car, drive here and ask a question or whatever, I mean, it's for certain announcements and things of the like, that's different. But to sit and try to be doing this, we're not, we're not a social media company, we're not Twitter or Facebook, so let's get over the fact.
No, not interested in that yet.
Public safety, it's got its, it's definitely got its ups, um, by a chief and EMS and things of the like, and when police need to use it to look into things and things of the like, but we don't need to get carried away with this.
Well, we're, we're. Oh, absolutely, we're working on updating the website, the website needed bad updates. I mean, there was a lot that wasn't happening on there, but I found that Facebook is a really good way to link people back to the website. So when we have it updated and we have all the information there, you know, throwing a post from the town of Dayton, oh, hey, check out, you know, even, even the selectman's agenda is, you know, sharing that link to say, you know, the selectman just posted an agenda, click here to see it. A lot of people just use social media, they don't think, to go to the website, but if they are, you know, friends with the town of Dayton, uh, the, the town of Akushnet, or they like the page, it'll show up on the news feed, and then they'll see it and be like, oh, wow, there's a, a meeting, let me look and see what's on there. So absolutely don't want to get into any kind of All Things Akushnet, you know, banter with people, that's not the point of it, but it's definitely to get information out there, and I think we have a lot of good things happening in town that I'd like to share.
It's definitely great for communicating a message, right?
Yes, mhm.
Right, information, information.
Yeah, communicating it one way.
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah, and you can, and, you know, obviously you can control everything on Facebook, so you don't have to allow comments if you don't want to.
Yeah, no, that's, that would just get stupid.
With sharing information and go from there, but, yeah, definitely hoping to reach more people and share a lot of the stuff that we're doing.
Well, a lot of these issues here that I see in front of me are goals of obje, not issues, but goals and objection, objectives. And we got CARES Act, money, funding, we're going to be, as I just mentioned, we're going to be receiving money, how are we going to apply it to different things that, that we, you know, we need? There was talk, Finance Committee talking with us, trying to, you know, maybe having a joint meeting, just to talk about how to, how to move the money around, that sort of thing. I got Senior Work Off Program, you know, this has been a point I brought up early in my term here. We have certain jobs, golf course, we just hired three or four people that, you know, that we could utilize this program for, instead of hiring people. COA, library, right off the top of my head, are three areas in town that we have. As, as the direct, no, not directed, but the appointed Serta bus person here in town. I've been, I'll make this announcement now as a preliminary announcement, but I've been working with Lynn Barubi over at Presidential Terrace and Heather Sylvia at the COA, and we're establishing, we should have it up and running by July or August, let me just say August, for buses going to Walmart and, I believe Walmart was on Wednesdays, and Market Basket on Mondays, for people who want to utilize it. It would be a small Serta bus and pick up at, at Presidential Terrace and take people accordingly to where they want to go. We also have, Serta also has a demand service here in town, that people, if you go to the Serta website, you can see how you can qualify for it, but you can get pretty much customized service, pick you up at your home, take you to a doctor's appointment, or, or there's other areas that they cover, as long as it's along the route that they travel. About, I think it's like three miles outside the route they can travel to. So people can utilize that, and that'd be something we'd put on Facebook in, in ways to get out there.
Is that for seniors only?
No, no, it's, it's, um.
Anyone, like, if you had a doctor's appointment, I know people have done it with doctor's appointments.
You need a doctor's certificate, and I'm still putting together all the information, but when we announce, when Presidential Terrace is going to start, we're going to throw it all out there for people to know. We talked last week about Russell Memorial Library, you know, we'll see what direction that takes us in. We have a continuing quarry situation that we're, we're dealing with right now, and that will proceed at its own pace, through, either through the courts or through negotiations. And I'm not going to expand on it too much right now, but one way or the other, it's, it's going to go. COVID, we have COVID, well, that's, hopefully that's wrapping up, we're all getting back to normal again. Or at least we're trying to, and, and transition through that period of time. We got the union contracts that we're still negotiating over the next year, all three of them are up for grabs. Police, DPW asked me, and then, yes, next year we're going to have to include fire, talked about trash tonight, sewer expansion, Mister Gaspar, you know, we talked about that previously.
I think, I think fire is up this year with police and DPW, I did a one-year extension a while back, and then to do the merger of the two departments, but then we flipped the switch, I think.
Police and DPW expire at the end of this year, so then.
Already, yeah.
Yeah, June thirtieth, ASME and Fire both have a contract that goes through the next year, so we'll be, we should be negotiating during the year.
Yeah, we should try to do our best to be ahead of the curve on that issue, so, but, and can you just, you want to start with that? I asked you a few weeks ago for the, a real copy of the police department contract, so.
You mean where everything is merged together?
A real police department contract, not an MOU, that I have to sit and paste and look at things and go, oh, what was the change? And then flip and go, oh, this is the part that's out? Spent a lot of money with attorneys, dated?
Police and Fire.
Police.
Police?
Police.
It's not been on our side.
Yeah, I don't know.
Nah, it was Roger, with Roger was doing it.
Yes, we, we have an MOA.
We gave him a police.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, so we have an MOA with them, but it, it hasn't, it has not been agreed to by the police to merge it into the full document, we've given it to them and they've been holding on to it. But we still have an active MOA, the MOA is, it's a valid, it's a valid.
Of course, it's a signed document, so it's going to be merged into the contract, I think it'd be given to the town as a complete document.
The town has done it and has given it to the police union, they have not returned it to us.
That's what it stands. Like mentioned, sewer expansion, CWMP, phase one, phase two, try to promote that, see how we can push it along. I'm a proponent of expanding sewer into town, I know it's going to be a, a huge task and a huge sale to the people that are going to have to hook into it, but.
We should always continue that, that discussion, Mister Chairman. It's really, it's really up to the, at this point, it's up to the residents that are going to be impacted. Out of town meeting, but we, we, the board of selectmen need to say, this is when we're going to do a meeting for those three hundred residents, we're just, roughly three hundred in each one of the phases, and we're going to, if we're going to do phase one, you bring phase one into a room, you send notifications, you talk, you discuss it, it's a majority of the people there, if they vote for it, we do a sewer phase. If they don't, you move on, it's that simple.
Yeah, because ultimately, it does come down to the, to the vote of the people, we're going to be affected by it.
It's got to be voted on by the people, so we'll figure that out.
Hamlet Street Bridge, Mister Gaspar, you had mentioned a few weeks back.
Yeah, fortunately, it was kicked, the can was kicked again from the state to the feds, so, I mean, it's, it's a work in progress thing right now. Kathy's back from vacation, I mentioned it a few weeks ago, a month ago, whatever it is, so she's back. I'll be getting into more discussions with her and her connections that she has with the folks that she's been discussing this with, but it's unfortunate. It's supposed to be done this year.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's supposed to be done fifteen years ago, be the reality, right? But we finally got put on the list, which was a great thing for us, and then it just kind of delays, and, you know, the pandemic's the, the, the big new excuse for everybody, so.
Yep, development on the walking path on the Kuschnet River, that's all tied in with the development, redevelopment of that area of town.
It'd be great to get that white path, walkin' path down that river, that'd be really nice. We talked about it for a long time, well, they talked about, Planning Board talked about bypass road, which is, you know, not going to happen, but a white path, walking path to connect us to Fayetteville would, would really be nice.
And, well, here we go, mail tax, before everyone yells out there in television land. You know, it's something that we need to discuss, it's a source of revenue that it's not just, well, I can't even, I don't even want to get into it now, but it's, it's on the agenda to be discussed. I know the last time we tried to bring it up, the pitch didn't go over very well, so, but we're in a new year.
It's a town meeting.
Yes, it did, overwhelmingly, so leave that. All right, so just leaves us for new business, we have a couple of contracts that we need to sign off on, and I think that's it for this evening, so new business, let me just catch up to the six. First contract we have is the, it's for the Board of Selectmen, and it's for the part-time administrative assistant, grants administrator. I know we've all read through it. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The planning contract that we have in front of us is being directed to the Planning Board, because on the town bylaw, Planning Board hires the planner, so.
I agree, Mister Chairman, I would, I would make a motion to forward to the Planning Board for their vote.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
It is under the purview of the Planning Board by the bylaws.
And the golf, we've tabled that for, until the next meeting, so we can review the wager class and that the golf course has submitted to us.
Right.
So, other than that, we only have information, I'd just like to take one minute and once again announce that we do have vacancies on boards and commissions in this town. The Agricultural Commission has one vacancy and two alternatives. Beautification Committee has ten vacancies. Board of Appeals, the Board of Appeals has one alternate vacancy. The Community Preservation Committee has two vacancies. The Cultural Council has two vacancies. Finance Committee has three vacancies on it.
And we actually have just received two letters of interest.
There we go, and so, so there might just be one vacancy left on the Finance Committee. And the Historical Committee has two vacancies. So if anybody is interested in, in, in working on these boards or commissions, please contact the selection's office.
We didn't assume, because we didn't hear back from anybody, that we're automatically disqualifying them as an appointed member of the Finance Committee, did we?
No, no.
We.
Nope, because Mister McGlynn, he resigned, and John Howcroft resigned, and we had one opening already.
Yeah, John had to go because of school.
Right.
Right.
I just want to make sure that, just because we didn't hear back from somebody, because I know one of those members has been commuting back and forth from Florida to here, so things, the communication line might be broken.
Mm-hmm.
I can reach out to them, but, you know, I didn't, I wasn't aware that they haven't responded, so I can reach out to that individual.
No, but we did pull anyone.
Maybe she doesn't have any interest anymore, and that's fine, but I just don't want to disqualify somebody just because we haven't got a lot of interest, because we've never done that in the past either.
Okay.
Very good, then, Julie, anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Future Business Selectmen's Meeting, July twelfth, twenty twenty, at four P M.
Very, very good, sounds great.
Spin.
So moved. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, everybody.